Well, it's 5:30. We'll go ahead and start the meeting. This is a special commission meeting to discuss the purchase of a used fire apparatus, so the discussion will be limited to that. No other topics will be discussed tonight. We received the report in an email Saturday and reviewed it and thought it'd be good to discuss the findings. I think, from what I saw, brought out a lot of points beyond the truck for us to look at going down the line. Some of the issues, particularly it seems consistent with that brand of lift, was that the lift that was considered on the other truck, that new truck also? Shaun?
On the new one that I was wondering about?
Yeah.
No, it would, no. It's not a Brano lift at all.
Okay. It was interesting to see some of the problems, bolt shearing, you know, that's basic structure design, that why is a manufacturer putting out a product that isn't capable of carrying the load? And a lot of the issues there, I think, you know, going, the research that you did is beneficial going forward, no matter what we end up doing with some of the, the point that was interesting is, one of them is the pump gauges were getting wet, causing them to malfunction. Okay. I mean, this is a vehicle used outside. I mean, it is a vehicle used with water under pressure. You know, there's a lot of things like that that you kind of come back and scratch your head of what's going on and some things to consider. Also, it seemed like a repeated statement, too many electronics, operator error, the manual, 223 pages for operating the equipment, 500 hours a year training. It's really some things I think we need to use and look for future replacement vehicle. You know, the training is really, really critical with a young firefighting staff. And some of the turnover rates we've had, that becomes an issue with training to make sure that the staff does have proper training. It looked like some of the computer operator errors of not getting outriggers set, not getting the ladder set, that it is an issue.
And Shaun, maybe you want to comment on that, about that station? And firefighters at that station are the only ones that use that truck. There's no different users of that truck, so it's the same ones using it all the time.
Yeah, so Tulsa, you know, you're assigned to a certain truck and that's your truck every time you're on duty. We're here, you know, you've got to be able to drive whatever truck we have, so if they're having operator errors and they're just assigned to that truck, that's, something's not right.
But it's also concerning, looking at what we've purchased to replace the ladder truck, that if we have, you know, we don't have designated drivers, designated pump operators, designated lift operators, and anyone is put in that role, we'll have it even worse than what they did where they had designated operators.
Right.
That when we start looking at a vehicle, it's going to have to be pretty trouble-free. And, you know, with electronics, I don't know if this is a trend for all the aerials now to have that much electronics, or, you know, it's something that we're going to need to take into the future and look to make sure that whatever vehicle we end up with is manageable for our crew.
Right.
So, comments from your review?
I guess when Tulsa went in and looked at this particular fire apparatus, they saw evidently a need for it. It meant requirements of the city structures and buildings in the town, and I don't think they had any idea that buying at least five of these particular units was going to be a problem down the road. With the aerials having a two-year mechanical warranty on them after that, any problems that you have with it become your expense, your expense of the city that owns the equipment. So even buying new in this case, you would think you would be buying a good piece of apparatus. Now, the E1 is a good, is a good truck. It looks like the design of this particular lift was not a good design structurally for the truck to be able to handle. But at the time when the purchase was made, you know, they were sold on the idea that this was going to be a good purchase. They felt it was good enough to where they ended up buying five of these, and it's ended up costing them, because I did some research on this too, I think $1.4 million in maintenance over the last several years. And I believe, maybe this is the last one that they've got in service, that they've gotten rid of, or there still may be another one out there.
I believe there's two of them out there. They're trying to sell.
Okay, okay. So at the time, you know, buying new, they thought they were doing the right thing, and he would have known in a short period of time that these vehicles were not going to be functional. So in that case, you know, come down, come back to hurt them. So I guess maybe in looking at, you know, the results that they had with this particular unit, I guess it gives us an indication of what we ought not to look for in a fire truck. The less electronics, I know electronics technology drives everything. We had it with the same process with, with our boom trucks, with our utility trucks at West Star. You know, the more electronics controls that they have, the more that has the tendency to hiccup and cause problems, and they can get expensive, and they can take a lot of maintenance time. So, and then being able to operate it, it almost sounds like in reading this, that there was such a fine line in the operation of setting the aerial up and getting it up in the air, that it didn't give you much margin of error, one way or the other.
Right.
And that didn't help matters either in trying to operate the truck. So trying to find something that's durable, maybe not technic, technology advanced, something that's durable, something that's easy, easy to understand and operate, or as least as best as an apparatus can be easily understood and to operate, would be beneficial. So it just, you know, gave you a lot of red flags of what not to consider when you're trying to incorporate certain things into a fire apparatus that you're trying to acquire. So, and I, and I thought this was the case. This particular aerial came out of Finland, and it was supposed to be a, the new design, you know, new up-and-coming aerial, and it gave them more capability to use, but it turned out to be a design problem, and you can hardly, hardly get rid of them, you can get rid of them for a lot less money, because their value is considerably decreased because of that right there. But the E1 is a good truck. You know, this has no bearing on the E1.
Right.
Good piece of equipment, just a bad design, a bad retrofit for that particular truck, just too much weight.
Did you find out who the sales company was for this truck?
Who sold them the truck?
Yeah, who fabricated it.
No, I did not.
I think that's, what I see is with a mismatch of lift to truck ratio and those type of problems, that comes back to the outfitter. Why did they match that lift on that truck? So going forward, as you start looking, I think that's something to consider. I've never found a salesman that ever said he had a bad product. So I think when you start listening to the salesman tell you how good their product is, it's when you start questioning the performance to find out the truth. One thing, you know, as we look, of course, it comes down to money, and always what we can afford. You know, I don't know if you picked up, but I'm really concerned, almost to the point of being irritated, that we raised five mil to raise money for streets and equipment like this, and now we need it and we don't have the money. You know, we've had seven, well, six years that we've known we've needed a truck, we've never put any money back. And now when the commission, we make an effort to meet that need, and the money's spent elsewhere, and now we keep getting pressure that we need to make a decision and authorize borrowing. You know, we as a commission, I feel, we did our job in providing a means for that money to be there. And to go to the people and raise five mil, their taxes for an area like this, and now come back and say, well, we don't have it, we've got to borrow a whole amount, you know, that takes the credibility on my word away from them. We seem to have raised over $700,000 in budget for immediate move out of City Hall, but we can't come up with anything to go down on a payment for a truck. I, I really have a problem borrowing all the money. You know, we've given an area for that to happen, and it should happen. And that's why, you know, we're, we've got a lot of issues, we can't keep doing this to our citizens. We've got to, we've got to protect them, we've got to protect our people with good equipment. But, you know, we made the effort to do that, and that one year we raised five mil for this and left on a 4.3, 4.6 mil for health care. And I know, you know, you weren't here, Shaun, and weren't involved with that, but we have to get the money, we have to cut spending to generate money for a vehicle.
Yeah, this is not a reflection on any of you guys that are trying to do this work, but we're trying to balance all this out. And, and I have the same concerns that Leonard does, you know, the, is the truck actually 20 or a 25-year-old truck? I've seen it addressed as a 93 and a 98.
A 93.
Which one is it? It's a 93. So, and, you know, if we would have looked at this, the truck has a life of 20 years. If we would have looked at this year 15, 16, and started putting money aside, budgeted money aside to build up a fund to make this purchase, because it, we know that it was coming up and it would need to be replaced. So my concern, my comments aren't directed to anybody here, you guys don't have nothing to do with it. All you guys do is you want good equipment that you can use and operate, and something that, you know, we can afford and pay for. But to me, it's just like, when we had the opportunities and we knew we were going to get to that point, we didn't, we didn't plan. With a, with a budget of 2018 of over $21 million, you're looking at less than 1%. 1%, if you could have budgeted $200,000 a year, less than 1% of that budgeted amount in five years, you'd have a million dollars. This would be, this would be a piece of cake. Hey, we've got the money, do it, drop the hammer. But that's not the case. That's just not the way we seem to operate. And with, with temporary building D, with the 1916 City Hall, you know, that money's, we've got to come up with that money, how much we're going to actually spend on this renovation, and we're going to have to figure out where that money's coming from, how are we going to pay for this? So you're looking at those two projects, along with this project, and along with the capital improvements for 1921 and '23. Long range, we're looking at replacing three pumper trucks at $400,000 apiece. So you're looking at $1.2 million for a new truck for 2019, you're looking for another $1.2 million in expenditures between 1920, or 2019 and 2023. So that's $2.4 million that we're looking at coming up money for. So it does, and it's, I mean, it's just unfortunate. It's unfortunate that, that we're all kind of placed in this situation, that we didn't, we didn't do planning, and this is a result of it. So, you know, we're going to, we're going to work this out. I mean, we have to work it out.
Well, one way to guarantee that the money is there is to establish an ordinance for a vehicle, then it's mandatory that the money be put in a fund for vehicles, and it can't be used elsewhere. But, you know, the, the thing where, we were sensitive to a need and made provisions, but then, you know, you look at the information we received concerning building D initially, you know, the, the operating expenses were never even close to what we've actually incurred. And knowing, you know, we're six months into the building and supposedly not knowing there were two electric meters, you know, there's some intentional misfiguring, and we can't go forward with, with this type of management of our funds that we've, we've got to, we've got to take care of the needs, but we've got a decreasing population, we've got a decreasing valuation of property. We're going to have to get sharper pencils and make sure that the money stays where we've, we've committed.
I don't disagree with what you're saying at all, and I've mentioned this before, and we talked about it, you know, we should have a vehicle replacement fund, whether by ordinance or just establishing the fund. And then if we fund that appropriately, like you say, well, if we look back, we could have put so much for this fire truck away. Well, the fire truck's not the only thing we need as well, you know, so there's lots of needs out there. So when we look at the capital budget, when I got here last year, I mean, there are a lot more needs identified by the departments than what we could afford to do. That's why we only had $150,000 in there for streets, the five mils that you talk about, it's in there in the general fund paying for capital, for the general fund capital, not specifically streets or specifically equipment, I guess some equipment if you, because it's in the general fund. But that's the issue, you've got to balance all this, all the needs of the city, and so if we could establish a vehicle replacement fund, but that, again, takes discipline and money to set that aside. And if you took that five mils and say, it's going to be strictly for equipment going forward, and we'll set that aside, that's, you know, that's what we can do. But then what about all the other needs in the capital program? I'm, so I'm agreeing with what you're saying, but we just got to look at as well as the big picture for everything.
Right, and that's what...
Because I think I mentioned, when I was interim manager, we needed to buy two large fire apparatus. We had the cash, because we'd had a vehicle replacement fund set up, not we, I mean, but the city had to develop that. So over the life of that, those trucks, they, they did it over 15 years. They start right away, when you do a vehicle replacement fund. First year, you start depreciating that, putting that aside. So if you have the discipline and then you can squeeze it into your budget, definitely let's do that.
Well, that's what...
And that's going to be our challenge going forward, this 2019 budget here.
We already did that. Remember, Gary, when we were discussing it? We said we don't have enough revenue. We carried over the 4.3, 4.6 for health care, and then we said, okay, we need a reserve for streets and big equipment, because we've got a fire truck coming up. Okay, we all agreed on 5% or 5...
Five mils, the 250,000.
Yeah, five mil. And we did that. You know, we, we've said we wanted that to happen, but the thing is, it didn't happen. Those, the money...
The five mils is still there. It's, it's that 250,000 is paid for capital.
It's there, but it wasn't put into, it was for discretion at streets and heavy equipment, because then, two years ago, we knew we were going to have the fire truck need, and we weren't getting grants. So that money, and of course, streets are important, but the fire truck is more important. That was a priority. That should have taken all five mil, because we weren't getting our grants, we knew it was going to be expensive, and that's where that money should have gone. It shouldn't have gone for other capital improvements. That was primary of the goal, because, you know, you look at, well, the maintenance list that you furnished on the ladder truck, 20,000 in one year, wasn't it, because it had been not maintained? Now, we had a, the main pump, the shaft was out of it, because it didn't have water flowing through it. So that's an expense. You've had other breakdowns with it. We're at that point that it's really costing more money, but what do we do? You know, we don't have the money set back in reserve, and we, you know, it's just like, I think we all have to do it at home, that what I want to do, eat or go to the show. You know, we've got to put priorities of what's the most important and stick to it, you know, because about almost three years ago, when we added the, the five mil increase, that's what we said it was for. You know, we can't just say anymore, because it doesn't happen. If we need a vehicle maintenance fund, then yeah, we need to go to an ordinance that it's set there and specify the amount, so it's covered, because, you know, you, and we're, I guess we all came on board at the wrong time, that we had a lot of issues that we've had to address. We've had some serious issues, and they're still there on how do we fund them, you know? Look at what we did with the water treatment plant, with the rates there to cover what hadn't been done. And, you know, but we've got to turn the ship around, or we're going to run aground. Or, well, maybe we're already there in some senses, that, you know, $40 water sewer rate increase a month, that's hit hard a lot of people. And we, we got to start looking at what's important, and, and only hit that, and cut wherever we can. If we need to lease off a space instead of building, we need to do that. We need to find, you know, different areas, it's time to think long-term of different approaches, because we can't keep, we can't keep going the way we are. And, you know, I think this is the first step that I see that, I wish we had had this Thursday night to have discussed it then, but what I see that is applicable not only to this one truck, but how do you know what you really need if you don't talk to other departments that are using the equipment? It's obvious that Tulsa didn't know these problems existed when they ordered that many trucks, because they only dealt with the salesman. So, you know, how do you know that the truck that we looked at before isn't going to have other issues unless you find out where they are and start talking to the men that have used them? And, you know, really analyzing the electronics as an issue. Electronics and water, but, you know, doesn't match, but if you can get into talking to some other large departments to find out, so when we, we do get a truck, that it meets our needs, that, you know, it's, it's one that, like you say, if you can't have designated operators, that anyone can walk up and run it. But I think it was, was a good report, Shaun. I think the way you put it together was, was really informative to let, you know, let us know who you talked to, the different angles that the input was coming from. You did a good job researching and talking to people to get you that information, and, you know, I hope you'd have time to keep, to narrow down the components that would provide a good truck, as we look to, to find ways to get the money to replace it.
In the short time I've been here, I just wondered what, what had stopped the city from making a lease purchase on this piece of equipment prior to it being, when it was getting close to 20 years old, and letting it extend past the life expectancy of the truck to 25? So my guess is there was never, they never had a funding source for it, or they never had a way to make payments for that. I have no, I have no idea.
It always comes down to the money.
You don't either. Yes, you know, it all, it all came down to that, so...
We can't play checkers.
No.
Wait till we're threatened, and then jump. We've got to have a plan.
That's the key thing. As you've mentioned already, this brings out a lot of things when you're looking at a used vehicle, and that, the last part there from that article, and protect yourself, you really have to do your homework on any piece of used equipment. And in what I've, what I've seen as well, is often you may want to have an expert, i.e. evaluate the equipment, not just, if you're getting serious about a piece of equipment, especially if it's, you're getting on 10 years or more, to really help evaluate it for you. But you really need to protect yourself.
Well, Tulsa didn't protect themselves with new equipment either.
Yeah. Well, they probably put out, they probably put out an RFP and took bids, and E1 came in with the low bid for five trucks, and they, I don't know if it was a low bid or not, but that's the one they chose, and you...
It shows where we have to, we have to know the equipment, that it's going to perform. We can't let the outfitter tell us what is going to go on there without us knowing how it's going to perform. That seems, to me, the breakdown with Tulsa is, they had a good sales job, and, you know, you look at, or the equipment, the lift, usually the, the German or the Finnish manufacturers are really precise and have good performing equipment, but this seemed to be...
Looked like good at the time, I guess. About five of them.
Yeah, so I think it's what we need to make sure that we're really familiar beyond the salesman's information.
I have a question for Craig. In the capital improvement budget for 2019 that we're going to be looking at, and it's based over a five-year program, there's $400,000 in there for a pumper truck replacement, and there's one in there, I think, every, every other year going into 2023. Is it possible to take that $400,000 and put it toward, put money, put that money aside to use for a purchase of? Because he had made a comment that if they replaced an aerial platform truck, they could, that would suffice as use as a, as a pumper truck also. I think the last meeting or two that they had made a presentation. Is that possible, and is there some way we can? Two questions. At, at one time, the previous city clerk, who'd been around here for years, said the city had maintained a funding amount for, on an emergency basis, in case of catastrophe or something that happened. They had some money set aside in an account, it might have been a half a million dollars, it might have been more than that. I have no idea if this money even exists anymore, if it does, where it would be, but is there some way we could look at $400,000 that we were going to put toward a pumper truck, that we could take that money and set that as, as a base, and then try to come up with additional monies to where we can actually fund, we actually have the cash in... We actually have the cash in hand? Yeah, that means something's gonna have to be put on the back burner, but, but we can, we move this up as a top priority and we move on. Is there a way we can work around this and meet the needs of the community and what these guys are looking for? The truck's twenty-five years old and I understand that.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it comes, it comes down to the priorities. And when I came here last year, we put together that capital plan for a six-year plan. And that, what you're looking at 2019, of course, is just the plan. There's no money actually budgeted there.
Right.
That's what we're gonna go through and budget for 2019. That first year, which was 2018, that's what's actually budgeted. And the rest of it's a plan. Sometimes in the plan, you have more than even you can fund that given year. So this coming year, as we prepare our capital plan, you'll see, it'll be laid out just like that. You'll see a six-year plan. And especially for 2019, we have to balance again how much we have, you know, what can we afford? And balance all the needs of, capital needs of the city, as well as, you know, fire EMS, we got public works and streets. I mean, I was talking with Mike today about, you know, we need to do more in streets. I mean, whether it's part of that five mil, I mean, we had a hundred fifty thousand, but I'd like to get that higher and slowly build that up to do more streets. But that's gotta squeeze either something else out or maybe, you know, sales tax isn't going up. So we don't know where that, you know, it's gonna come from. But it's a balancing act and a priority act. And that's what this program, setting a six-year capital plan and a budget is all about.
Right.
So obviously, this is one of our top priorities, public safety.
It's. And it may be that in 2019, when we sit down and look at this, we may have to make those choices to where some things are gonna have to be put off another year. You know, but out of all these things, what is the, what is the number or the top three priorities that we need to address? As much as I would like to have, as an example, and my street doesn't need repaired, but let's say it would.
Yeah.
But it's more beneficial to buy a piece of fire apparatus that serves the whole city and maybe my street doesn't get worked on for another two or three years down the road. But the higher priority is this because it benefits the whole community.
Right, I mean, I can't tell you how many, when we were looking at 2019 specifically capital, you know, we'd laid out six years, but in the year 2019, I can't, maybe Mike can remember, how much, you always have, there's more requests and needs that you can afford, so you push them into the out-years. And I can't remember what the initial requests were from the departments on capital, but we had to shift a lot. We just had to set the priorities and make those decisions in that regard. So it's a, again, it comes down to the priorities and how much you have to support capital plans. We, fortunately, I mean, a lot of our capital projects, if you're looking there under funding source, that lists them by funding source, besides the general fund, we have some special funds, i.e. the special use sales tax for certain things like ADA, that's paying for, paying for the ADA improvements. And if we had to do those things, it's not a general fund, not, I don't know where we'd get that money. But so we have some, some funding sources like that. But there's, again, they're specifically for certain things. There's quarters for city facilities, so we can use some of that for that. That helps fund the capital project. But when it comes just down to general fund money, which is primarily property tax and sales tax, and sales tax isn't growing. Maybe it will be.
When we can build a cash.
We're hoping it will be.
When we can build a cash revenue reserve, then we save, save interest. And when you borrow a hundred percent on everything we do, we're spending revenue senselessly. You know, if you, if we had five hundred thousand, we ended up by five hundred thousand, we've got the interest off the five hundred thousand to use somewhere else. And, you know, like in, in three years, if we waited till 2019, we would have seven hundred fifty thousand, so we'd only have to fund three hundred thousand. So our interest is what we can use for something else. And you keep your notes short-term. You don't, you know, we got twenty-year bonds on a seven-year street. You know, we're spending money that we're gonna have to rethink, that we're gonna have to build up to put money down. Every vehicle we bought, we've had, you know, our sanitation trucks, our ambulances, we fund a hundred percent. We've gotta turn it around and we build the reserve so that we can use that money back into our capital projects. And the problem we're at, I know, you know, we're at that point. We got a lot of needs, we have to do something. But let's make sure we can get it turned around that we can put more money back in instead of just borrowing everything. And, you know, I was, I guess it really came home when I bought my motorcycle and I saw, I met a good salesman in Texas. And when they worked the financing out to give me the bike there and finance it here, I saw I was, over seven years, I was buying another motorcycle. No, I wasn't. I was giving them the money for another motorcycle. And that was when all of a sudden, it's like, you can't keep borrowing a hundred percent. Those good salesmen, because that's money in their pocket. The finance company, they love that. And it just goes down when we're looking at a million or five hundred thousand, that's a lot of, a lot of money we can recycle back to our needs. But I know we're coming up on our budget and then, you know, we're still trying to get the audit to make sure where we're gonna be from sixteen. But, you know, I. I think first addressing the used truck that was on blue, Purple Wave, I don't think it's one we should pursue for a couple reasons. We don't have money to put, to buy it. But then with your research, there's a lot of questions there because, you know, if, if the equipment is mismatched to the frame and, you know, shearing bolts is a sign that there's a load issue somewhere, that it's gonna transfer on down into the other components. So, yeah, you might have the right-sized bolt that it wasn't shearing, but you might have bearing plates that are also undersized. So it could be a lot more problems, not only electronically, but a risk for not only the operator in the aerial, but also those on the ground. So, you know, I would be concerned because it just looks like that, that truck was way overloaded with some of the issues. And the electronics are only gonna get worse when it gets older. So, you know, as far as I would see, it would be one, this truck would be one to pass on.
I agree.
So, you guys, opinions?
I think what the research Sean had done on the vehicle and what I had looked at when this truck came up on Purple Wave, and I thought it was the same truck that they had issues with. This goes back to Mike, though. If, I have no idea if this, if that money that the city had used to set aside in previous years, if that money even exists.
Half mil or half million.
Or whatever.
This may be drawn out.
Where it would be, if that even exists, or that money, whatever it was, has long since been dispersed?
I think it's been long since dispersed. I mean, there's no fun sitting there with that magic half million dollars there. And I think that, and Kelly can correct me if I'm wrong here. I think that money had to be utilized when they hit the recession back in oh-eight, oh-nine, somewhere in that period of time. I had, I think they had to get into that pretty heavily then.
Okay.
From what I understand, I mean, I don't specifically know, but.
Can I ask Kelly?
Sure.
Kelly, I mean, was that, was that true or that right, the statement that I made that the city used to maintain some amount of funding?
Are you talking about the unencumbered fund balance, unencumbered cash?
No, this would be.
It'd be a restricted, it sounds like a restricted fund.
Yeah, they, I was told they had, the city had set aside some money to cover like a catastrophic event. Something that, like if they had, if they had to come up with a half a million dollars, they might have a problem with that. But they had some money, I don't know whether they carried that over from year to year.
The water sewer account had and has an emergency fund that has about that amount of money.
That, that, I mean, I don't know if that's maybe where they set it aside at.
That maybe, see, I have no idea where this money would have been set up.
Under, unencumbered fund balances that were a lot higher before the recession that they did, you know, because they didn't wanna raise the mil rate during that time, they did kinda utilize some of those balanced funds, but that's from years ago.
I mean, that's why you carry a certain, you wanna carry and maintain a certain percentage of your operating budget as an unrestricted fund balance for emergencies. Or, and, or then you can set, you can set up restricted fund balances, take some of that fund balances and specifically say it's for this purpose and only this purpose. But for the large part, you wanna look at every fund, water fund, sewer fund, sanitation, and the general fund. You look at, you wanna carry a certain percentage financially prudent to do that, again, for emergencies, it may, rainy day fund, if you will, the emergency fund that you carry in a budget. So that might have been, that might have been, and they just might have said, we have, we have a certain unrestricted fund balance that we could use in a case of emergency.
Okay. So am I. Like I said, I'm, this is coming from previous employees and I just wondered if that money was still available or it was in a specific fund? It's been spent down the road?
Yeah, I've been, I've been sure that there was at one time. But how that was structured or set.
Whenever it is, it's, when you look, it's not, it's not there anymore.
No, no. I mean, there again, unless it, part of that mechanism of setting aside was to push it back through the, say, the water sewer fund. Because there is a reserve set there. I don't know how that, that reserve was set aside there, but I think it was probably specifically for maybe emergencies that might arise through the water, water treatment facility or whatever the case may be. I'm not certain, though.
You can't hit those funds to be a reserve for other areas or then when you have an emergency.
You don't have.
In that area, then you don't have the money.
Yeah, and there's a million dollars set aside on that side of it.
That's exactly what we happened with the water treatment plant. We never built up a reserve, so we can't do maintenance. And now we've gotta raise to generate money to do the repairs, but also start building a reserve fund there in case there's an emergency.
Correct.
So each, each account or each funding has to have its own source. And, you know, I guess the main thing, what I, you know, I'm speaking for myself, of course, that if we're gonna have a truck, we're gonna have to get the money. Means we're gonna have to start finding the money to have a down payment to purchase. You know, I have a problem voting to fund a hundred percent of that vehicle.
Yeah, I.
So just to close out the official action on the Tulsa truck, do I have a motion to submit a bid for purchase? Or submit a bid for the purchase of the truck on Purple Wave?
So you'd like to make a motion, just for the record, so we can turn it down some amount?
Okay. We have a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye. Motion didn't carry. So that issue is closed for now and I think we still need to keep looking. You know, even if we could find a truck to get by a few years.
I just need some direction as far as what, I need a price range. I know you can't, I know it's, I need to know what to look for, you know?
Yeah.
Price range wise, so.
Mike's got the dollars. He's a man with the money.
I think, and I don't wanna speak for Sean, I don't wanna speak for Craig.
But, you know, you can look at it and come back, make ten.
That's what we'd have, we'd have to do.
Yeah, that's too much right now.
It's look, typically, it's like, well, here's a truck, can we afford this truck? If it's a ten-year or a twelve-year, and then we look at. But it's hard to say now. I mean, we do have, obviously, as I mentioned, unrestricted general fund revenue and you can, and you could certainly tap into that. Again, depending on how much, how much you wanna do that. When we were looking at buying the new truck and leasing it, you know, we'd programmed the first expenditure would be in 2019, not 2018. And I think we were talking two hundred thousand?
No, it was a hundred and thirty-five.
Well, that was with the ten-year.
Yeah, and so, and.
Five years.
Just so you understand that as we're working through the CIPs right now and David and Sean and I did sit down last week and we're really going through theirs. Number one, we pulled that number down a little bit. We do, we do still have that in there as it exists today with a lease purchase on there for ten years on a new piece, on a new truck.
Did you say for ten years?
Yeah. So through, through the analysis that I did, and then Leonard, I truly understand where you're coming from and I, I agree with you as well in that respect. We know we have a twenty-year vehicle. Let's just say, for instance, we bought it new. Understanding that if we set aside those funds each year on our budget to retire that debt in ten years, we have another ten years then to get ready for the purchase of that next truck. And you just continue on down that same road so that when you get to that, the end of that lifecycle, you're ready to go, you're ready to pull the trigger. And granted, of course, in twenty years, that truck's gonna be significantly more than it is today, but it'd be a good start to where we need to be at. So I think that that follows up. And with what Craig says, it would be wonderful if we were sitting here today and we had an equipment replacement fund that we could just go tap that had been set up years and years ago, but we don't. And those things take a little bit of time and they take some planning. You can't, you can't just go from nothing to everything overnight. So I think we're slowly gonna have to just build that up and we're gonna have to plan, we're gonna have to be very dedicated in the way that we approach that and management throughout the course of the year and getting it built up.
Yeah, and the thing that I'd look is when we said, okay, we'll raise five mil, then we thought it was gonna happen and it didn't. It was spent elsewhere. So now, we're saying that after we service our debt and pay it off in ten years, we'll keep putting money back so in ten more years, we'll have money for a new truck. But if we didn't the last two years, where's my proof that it's gonna happen ten years down the road?
Sure, I understand your concern.
Yeah, you know, I'm just saying, we gotta get on our word that if our word has any meaning, we.
No.
Stand by it.
I agree, I agree. I think you got agreement on, by all of us here.
I have a question for you, Sean. What's the, what's the state of the ladder truck? It's, the power steering, was that?
Power steering is fixed.
Had to be rebuilt.
Right, it is leaking still.
Okay.
So I've gotten in contact with KC Truck in Cherryville. So we just need to get it over there. He's gonna put some dye in it and figure out exactly where the leak is.
Is it from the pump area or is it, you're talking about?
No, from the engine itself.
From the engine itself?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So that's where we're at. Right now, it's functional, they had it out today, you know, testing it, make sure it's operational. So right now, it's operational.
Now, the leak that you're referring to, was that the one where they had given an unofficial estimate? a, an unofficial estimate of around, at twenty thousand dollars?
Right.
To make the repairs?
Right.
Okay, so that's still kind of up in the air depending on where the leak is?
Yes.
And then what it's going to take to fix that?
Yes.
Uh, so, um, you know, we've got our work cut out for us and that's the understatement of the year.
And just to give you a ballpark figure, uh, there is a Sefan ninety-five foot in Columbia, Missouri, two thousand and three, and they're wanting two hundred and twenty-five thousand, so that's to give you an idea of what they're going for.
Well, since that was the only item on our agenda, if we have no more discussion on that, then I consider the meeting adjourned.
Motion?
Head from our sample meeting.
Want to take a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
We were told we didn't actually need motions to adjourn at the, at our last training session.
At the length.
But.
That we will.
Okay. We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion.
Thank you, Sean.
Do you have something for us to sign tonight?